So live and then a recording, so. Okay, John, it's okay for us to go ahead and get started.
Okay, thanks Erica and. Go. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here with us tonight. We certainly appreciate everybody accommodating the Tuesday. Start instead of Wednesday this week, we wanted to do it a little bit. Further before or further ahead of the Christmas holiday, so as hopefully not to inconvenience anyone's holiday plans. So as we talked about last week, after just a couple of quick logistic things before I turn things over to Dr. Coleman to get the meeting started. Just a reminder, this will be our last full task force meeting until January 12. During the interim, we hope that the subcommittees will continue to meet and work on their recommendations. So we come together on the 12th, the idea will be to, you know, have some discussions, some initial discussions about some of the. Recommendations that each of the subcommittees wants to put forward. We're not going to take a vote that night. The goal will be to put some of that on the table and have some discussion. And then, as we talked about last week, Dr. Coleman did submit. A request to the county executive to extend. The task force work by one month. The county executive accepted that. And we are in the process of just finalizing the updated executive order. That should be done before the end of the week and we'll send out an updated copy of that along with the letter from the county executive acknowledging. The extension. So as soon as we have that official, we will put the invitation together for the second public listening session. And for those who are watching us tonight, we are going to have a second public listening session in January. So we'll get that information out to you as soon as we can and look forward to the opportunity to hear from everyone. Especially once the public has had an opportunity to. Hear some of the thoughts of the task force members on some of the potential recommendations. And then give you, give the public another opportunity to weigh in on those recommendations and any other thoughts they may have. So with that, I think I will turn things over to Dr. Coleman and have him go ahead and take it from here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Erzen. Dr. Golson, usually I have about a 15 minutes or so introduction, but I think everyone knows who you are. I really appreciate you coming here this evening, appreciate you sharing your insights as CEO. And your other positions for that matter in the county. We're so gracious for you to be here and to share. Your ideas, insights, experiences and training around roles, responsibilities. For Prince George's County and how that works for you. And I think you have your ear on the ground with your colleagues around the state in the region. Or to see, you know, what are some of the differences and what works for? Other places that might work for Prince George's County or not, along with anything else you want to share with us this evening. What we'll do is if it's okay with you, we will ask you to present. Whatever you want to share with us and then we will open the floor to the membership or to the task for membership for any Q and A.
Thank you. Thank you first to the task force for having me this evening and allowing me to have an opportunity to present to you before you go into your final deliberations. So I was asked to share what on the optimal optimal Board of Education relationship with the CEO and superintendent. Would look like not just here but across the nation. So. I'll be brief and then I'll have an opportunity to take questions. So a strong and effective relationship between the Board of Education and the CEO or superintendent depends upon very clear definitions. Of each body's duties and responsibilities. There must be a clear process for communication between the Board of Education and the administration. And the ideal route of communication from board members to administration. Executive members and staff should travel to the CEO. For communication to his or her staff. Constant transition of new board members requires. Intensive training and onboarding and continuous professional development. Training should occur on a year round basis. To establish a baseline knowledge about the CEO or superintendent's roles and responsibilities. The Board of Education's responsibilities and how the school system functions. School boards and the CEO or superintendents must act as a singular voice. Or what will typically happen is that specific board members. Who begin to try to appease special interests rather than the public at large can result in the dilution. Of successful policy recommendations. In successful districts, board members focus on long term strategic planning. And the CEO and superintendents focus on successfully implementing policies and procedures. That promote student learning and success. Ultimately, student achievement is and should be the primary. Primary goal of all policy decisions created by the Board of Education. And then lastly, literature on this topic suggests that. There's been a shift in the way boards of education roles have ventured outside of their state and district defined roles. Quote, "Strategy, leadership and policy development." Into many members. Delve into administrative and day to day specifics as well as advancing. Political motivations which in the end results deteriorates aboard superintendent and relationship. End quote. So that is ultimately while it's short, there's a lot of work that's required really in order to have a cohesive. Agreement and work string between the superintendent, CEO and the Board of Education. And now I am ready to receive questions.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. So what do our per usual are task force members will raise their hand, either. Literally visually or electronically and. I'm stalling right now actually to give them wait time. Until we have a question come up populate, I'll start off with a couple of questions or I'll start one at a time until we have something from the rest of the committee. You mentioned a quote that was, I think it was an important quote. Can you provide us with a reference to that quote?
I sure can. It's from Hanover Research. So what I will do is. Let me see if I can cut and paste it and put it in the chat. So then you can reference it. It's a called effective board. Yeah, and superintendent collaboration.
Thank you. I have an order of Ms. Rivera, then Ms. Smith.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Golson for that. This is possibly a little picky question, but. What is the difference between a CEO and a superintendent and does that fit in anywhere? I get asked that in my life and I just wonder.
Great question. So the legislation, House Bill 1107 has defined the role of CEO. Many times when I am working with other school districts, I really honestly truly share that the duties are very similar to. A superintendent. What's different here is that. The previous county executive provided outlined duties for that CEO and wanted to make sure that it was separate from. What other superintendents do in the state of Maryland. So there are just really minor changes around the role and responsibilities that this CEO has in the Prince George's County Public Schools versus another district.
So you wouldn't recommend it change? It's just fine the way it is? Doesn't matter?
That would be honestly, that'd be up to the committee. I think at the end of the day, the work is still the work.
Okay, okay. And it doesn't affect in any way the relationship with the board, the school board, any of that?
I don't believe it does, no.
Okay, I think that's helpful. The line of. Communication and if I can take advantage, Dr. Coleman, and ask another question, and this has to do with. As in our little smaller group and even it's alleged as the whole accountability question. About, you know, how. I'm not even sure how to ask the question. We just know that accountability is hard. When there's an expectation of behavior perhaps on the board. And how you learn about it and then who actually, if there's something that appears to be an infraction, how it's handled and who's the one that. Comes down and says, bad girl, bad boy, you know, you have to resign or move on or. Can you talk about that a little?
Typically, that's reserved to the role of the board chair. And vice chair. So what would typically happen is board members would obviously share that concern. With the board chair and in most superintendent's contracts is delineated that those concerns go to that person and then the chair then. Converses with the CEO or superintendent to to share that information and then what they consider to be next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Hi, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Golson for being here today. My question is. A little related to Sue's question. You had mentioned some clear definitions and clear processes for. The relationship, a strong and effective relationship between superintendent and the board. Can you elaborate on clear definition and clear process? What does that look like? What has been effective, especially with you in the position? And what, 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 what has worked? What would you hope to see in the future? And also what hasn't worked in terms of processes? And when it hasn't been clear defined so that as we are making our recommendations, we can really. Home in on. Those clear definitions. I'm, I'm sure we've read a lot of information and we've get gotten a lot of information. But what did you mean by clear definition and clear process? Thank you.
For that question. So clear definition. So what I refer to when I look at what my responsibilities are and that of the Board of Education in this case. Is referred back to House Bill 1107. And most typical cases, it goes back to the documents that literally outline and are typically updated regularly around. What the Board of Education's role is. In most cases, you'll find that on that Board of Education's webpage. And is most, in most cases revolved around policy. As I say, at more high level. And the day to day operations of the school district are left to the CEO superintendent. What works best is when. Those roles in the relationship between the CEO and the Board of Education allow that to happen. And that there's constant communication as I shared before. So that means that a lot of times that means that the board chair and the CEO or superintendent will converse. Maybe two or three times a week about what's happening in the district and then. Like, for example, in my case, I do a weekly update to all board members around kind of just things that have happened in the district for the week, just to keep them updated. Each board and superintendent kind of establish what that looks like. Some say, hey, I don't need a weekly update. I could do it on a monthly basis. But that would, you know, I really think that that's left up to the superintendent and the learning style of that. Board. And then. What doesn't work is when you're not able to really have an understanding around that communication piece. So. Typically, I think across the US, one of the things that happens is that. Many times superintendent CEOs have to remind board members that they have one employee. And that employee is that CEO or superintendent. It's not all the employees that fall below. And so that ultimately sometimes ends up where there's the. Where you have to continue to remind because it's just, they just feel like, hey, I know someone, so I'll just email them directly. And then it begins to erode the relationship between that superintendent and the board. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, Ms. Rivera. Yeah, any other questions currently from? Let's see, Dr. Christie, hello.
Thank you and good evening, Dr. Golson. Thank you for being here. I know you have your hands. Very, very full right now. It should have been a quiet week leading into the holidays. Most certainly is not. So thank you for being here. My question is related to the impact of having your job. And your appointment to your job being done by the county executive versus the school board. In terms of their ability to have ownership and support for you as their employee that they didn't actually select or hire and whether or not you think that that is a. Good dynamic, a bad dynamic, and what would be your suggestion around that?
Honestly, I think based on everything that has happened recently, I think within the last year, I think having. Me have been selected by a separate entity was helpful because it allowed an opportunity for me to stay out of the fray between board members. And not get in the middle of it and allow me honest and truly to focus on the day to day operations of the school district. Now, I do also just want to give them credit too that, you know, as board members, they ultimately were like, hey, we need you to focus on PG CPS. And let us handle our issues. And so we were able to separate the two. I think had that not been the case, it would have been difficult. Because I think a CEO or superintendent would have felt like they were torn or thrown into the middle of it. And the ability to step away from it and honestly, just to focus on the day to day operations was helpful for me. The work is hard. I talk to colleagues all the time. Who just, you know, find that it is tiring, which could. Very much, I'm not saying that across the board, but we have a large number of superintendents who are leaving. In the state of Maryland and it just gets too much to navigate both.
Thank you, Dr. Christie. Ms. Rivera and Ms. Smith, if you don't have an additional question right now, can you lower your hand so I know when you have another question? Please, thank you. Any other questions currently from? The task force members? Hi, Ms. Thornton Thomas.
Hi, hello there. How are you doing, Dr. Golson? We've had a lot of conversations, so. I, you know, I feel I have, how do I say this in a good way? A special report, is that all right? Okay, great. As we've, we've had questions, she's been kind enough to work with us and. And sometimes they are hard questions, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to kind of talk to you about your. Administration, the, the executive component of that, all right? And if you could give us a little maybe insight on how that works and how do you think we could better? You know, maybe that you would be able to better change that to be more supportive to staff or less, or do you have enough people working? Or do maybe you feel you might have to change and look at maybe a different direction for some of the positions that you presently have?
Thanks for that question. So when I first came into the role as interim, one of the things that I quickly did was assess where we were on the executive level and that are those people that report directly to me and then those who follow underneath that. And there were a large number of executive level staff and so made a decision to restructure. Our administration so that we could redirect funds back to the classroom. Yet there are times when we look at the efficiency and effectiveness of the work that we're able to do and we make changes. But what we do our very best to do is to hold firm to the number of positions we have and not add additional at the executive level. If there are any positions that we tend to add, it's going to be some that impact schools that are directly. In our schoolhouses or that we can show have what we call a touch to a student. Meaning that we can show evidence that there are some direct services. At this time, while we fully understand. There are lots of additional requirements. The blueprint for Maryland's future is a great example of that. When we were able to bring that, when that legislation was finally approved, that year before. I had repurposed a position so it could solely focus on that. And then it just so happened that the legislation provided funding for it. So we used existing to meet the needs of what we needed for the organization. I think if you just continue myself along with any future CEOs, really just kind of focus on. What helps to impact the classroom and not add so many to the executive level, then I think you still have a nice balance.
One of the questions I get from a lot of people is that they were wondering. Has the system actually considered desk audits for some of the departments? Now you know what that means, right?
We actually do conduct desk audit. And we have a guide, administrative procedure that talks about what that process is and just for anyone who's listening. A desk audit is really for someone from human resources to come in and analyze what is it the. Job description outlines that that employee would do and what is it that they actually are doing and does that position need to be realigned? So that it supports the true work if there's been a change. And we do do that.
All right. And is that, is that yearly or every other year?
It's upon request, so it's not like it's.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton Thomas. Any other questions currently? Dr. Golson, while I'm giving the, the team some more wait time, I have an additional question. Just a follow up question to some of what we talked about. We talked about good communication being a key. To good relationships, if you will. How do you, how do you think we get there? Between the CEO and the BOE. You mentioned, you talked about frequency and updates. And then we talked about PD and so if you can sort of give us from your perspective a roadmap.
I think those editors that you just used are great. One that you didn't mention was trust.
Yes.
And so, you know, when that CEO or superintendent is selected. Providing them an opportunity to show their value and worth by the decisions that they make and trusting. That they're making the best decision as possible. One of the great relationships that exists between boards is that there won't always be a level of agreement on every topic. And but the opportunity to have those candid conversations, to hear everyone's voice. And to give and take. I think is the optimal relationship that exists. So that communication is relationships. I think a true example is you, you learn each board member's mode of communication. So for example, I've personally spoken to two board members today, but then text with four others. So knowing what their demands are during the day, what mine are, knowing that, okay, no one's going to be offended by a response back from a text because that's that person's mode of communication. Or sending a link to say, hey, this is where you could find it. Each, you know, that comes over time and really getting to know each other. And when you build those relationships, it helps to create a team environment.
Thank you. And as follow to that. It sounds to me that some of. The picture that I'm developing in my, in my head, at least, it sounds to me that some of that is just a matter of being with one another. And that's through professional development probably or through the ongoing meetings. Is there a particular professional development? Event, location, something that you think is a good idea to help engender good or better communication?
Yeah, so I think there's several organizations and opportunities to do that. One, I think it first starts with us to look within. If we could do better, I think our team administration could do better with carving out more time, especially if it's continuous. Around the work of each division. It's easy to look from the outside in, but once you become a board member, your lens should change and look different. And the information that you now have access to is different.
Yes.
And your role is different. And so I think that requires an opportunity to revisit that regularly. And having each of my divisions continue on an annual basis to review. What we're doing, the work that we're doing, changes, policies, procedures, how that affects the work helps that. I think we could do a better job of that. There's a Maryland associations for school boards that also provide some support. There's a national association. And one of the other things that I had enough, I have an opportunity to have an executive coach. And I think it also benefits board members to also have a coach. Because there, it helps to also have that support from someone. Who's potentially been in that role before or who has the expertise, who can help board members and CEOs navigate on the terrain that you're in.
Appreciate that. That executive coach piece is something that is just hearing in this context. So thank you for that. Look, I have a list of questions, but I want to yield to my. To my task members. I'm Ms. Thornton Thomas.
I have one more. And this one speaks to the elephant in the room. One of the concerns I think a lot of our families have, and I get comments all the time from all, from every level, it seems like, but is the political part of it. We have. Wonderful delegates, we have wonderful senators. We have our elected officials at the federal level. And it is assumed by many that sometimes that can be a. That can be a kind of, I'd say, a pivotal point as to where you have to stop and maybe take a step back and look at something before you can respond. Because there is a political piece to it. Does, if you could just speak to that and tell us how you handle that. What you might, what we can do, I guess, in the community, because I'm looking for a way to answer people who call me. And then hope to be able to tell them that our school system is not political, but it is working with the community. And I just wanted to know if you could just address that because I know you get a lot of comments about that as well.
If I can help frame some of that conversation just before you go, Dr. Golson. And that's a wonderful question. What should? A Board of Education or CEO do in, as it relates to, you know, political responses? And what have you seen across, either seen or heard? In your experience or across the board that lends to that? This is making sure that we tread lightly around political issues.
So let me first say that. That question is, is a great question because it really lends itself to what I wrote my dissertation on, which is. You know, what are the determining factors? That we look at to determine the longevity of the urban superintendent. And from Bowman and Deal, the one that bubbled up to the top was the political friend. And honestly, truly, that is what many cases determines how long a superintendent stays. Whether politicians get involved in the. Conversations with superintendents around the day to day operations. Or. You know, or boards of educations get into with other politicians around it. And so it, it can be very much. On part of the decision making that happens around whether that CEO or superintendent lasts for a while. I will say, in our case, I am blessed. That our politicians, honest and true, delegates, council members and senators. Have been very supportive of allowing me to make the decisions. But I believe that comes with open communication. So a great example would be the recent announcement on Friday around the closure of schools as it relates to. The large number of COVID-19 cases. The same communication that I sent out to our parents and staff members, I also sent out to elected officials so that we could all have one voice. One. You know, we say one ban, one sound. So that everyone hears the same language and understands that if something is. Bubbling up in their community where I've seen several emails on that topic, I do my best to reach out to say, hey. You might be getting the same communication. These are the facts. And it has helped a lot. So I will say, once again, I don't, I'm sure. I know that not everyone agrees with every decision I make. But they have been very respectful. In saying that you're in that seat. And I have been very honest and forceful with them to say, it all falls on me. So when it all goes bad, it's on me. So allow me to make those decisions and they have done that. Can it become sticky? It can. But I will say that really, for the most part, everyone has honestly, for what we say, stayed in their life. And I'm grateful for that. I can tell you that does not exist every week. But I think that's just from relationships, is trying to establish relationships. And I will be honest, I started. In my position, I can remember. As an interim meeting, all of the delegates and senators in the boardroom and literally. Allowing them to ask any and every question they could think of of me and it was almost as if I wasn't allowing a fire for three hours. But what it did show them is that. I'm here, I'm not going to leave. I've answered your questions. We might all agree with the responses. But I also gave a rationale and that began to open that door of open communication.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton Thomas. I really do appreciate the question and those types of questions. Can I hear you, Ms. Thornton Thomas?
May I also just add a little bit to that? One of the things I had mentioned to fail to mention is that. A lot of those questions were around funding and what, what, you know. Companies were going to work with you on whatever project, school project that you might have. And so people are always wondering, who's going to get the contract? You know, do they have conversations with you regarding that? And is there a push to whatever the percentage is? Are we doing the right ones for our? You know, our black businesses and so forth. So that was one of the questions. I forgot to add that to it. I apologize. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you for asking that question. So having been. A member of the PG CPS professional family for 31 years. I have learned a whole lot from a whole lot of my predecessors. And so what I do not do as CEO is meet directly with it. I feel like there needs to be. I feel like there needs to be a clear delineation between that and those contractors. So the great thing is, is that I have, I have 10 chiefs. And they listen, they meet with them, they give them feedback on, yeah, this is a great product or not. But more importantly, we are really committed to following the request for proposal process. Because if we ever want to change how people perceive the way we do business, it has to be done correctly. And in terms of our support for our own community, so community-based businesses and for minority-based businesses, I think what I have learned over the past couple of years is that what we have to do as a PG CPS professional community is capacity build. And I think our chamber does a great job of helping to provide that support. So are there places we could improve? You can darn skip, people leave it. But I don't spend my time, because if so, I never have an opportunity to get into a classroom, to see instructions, to see Brit Little's working and to work with divisions to improve the efficiency of the organization. Because there are businesses reaching out every single day and they all have the right product.
Thank you, Ms. Thorn Thomas, for reframing your question and for Dr. Golson for further elaborating. Hi, Dr. Wallace, or excuse me, Mr. Wallace. I'm going to be Dr. Wallace, however you want to be referred to.
Al is fine. The question I have has to do with being a CEO or superintendent between the board and your staff. And the question is, on a month-to-month basis, what percent of your time are you spent dealing with, and I use dealing with loosely, board and board issues vice, the people that work for you? On a month-to-month basis, do you find that 95% of your time is spent dealing with your staffing down? And that the board, you, you've got to send them an email or a text or whatever, but it's a very little part of your time, four, five percent of your time? Or is it, no, 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 they're in my Kool-Aid. And so the way we work, half, half, half of my time and effort is spent dealing with the board. So to a first order, what, what would you say time-wise commitment over the course of a month?
Excellent question. Now you're going to have me go back and chart this out, because you know, I am a data-driven woman. You know, I, I spent, so maybe if I equate this by a day, I probably spend an hour a day responding to emails and queries from board members or related topics. And then, you know, if you want to calculate what that looks like over time, but it ends up in about a day. Now, what I have done is that on days of board meetings, I do spend the entire day. I try to block off that day in preparation for that Board of Education meeting, reaching out if people have questions at the last minute. But I think actually in conversation with many other superintendents, many of them do carve out a very set, specific amount of time on that day of board meeting, one, to get yourself mentally prepared for it. So you know, you know all the items that are presented and then to be available. But I probably spend at least an hour a day, at least. And when it's, you know, a little crazy, like it's right now, it might be a little bit more.
I understand. Thank you.
But now I'm going to go chart this out over the break. If there are changes, I'll email you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a data guy too. So yeah, I'd love to see.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Thank you, Dr. Golson. Any other questions currently from our task force members? Dr. Golson, I want to transition a little bit with another question. And I really appreciate you being willing to answer any question. And it could be from various topics. So thank you in so many ways. I want to talk about a student member, right? To sort of frame, you know, give you an idea of where I'm going with this. So do you think that there should be a student member? If so, do you think that that student member should have full voting, voting rights? If so or not, do you think that that student member should be compensated, whether it's tuition or some other way? I mean, so what do you, I'm fielding your thoughts around a student member.
First and foremost, yes, there should definitely be a student member of the board. I say that emphatically. We have been blessed to have some really great student members of the board. And from it have been able to have some policies that really, that will be using financial literacy is one that was spearheaded by one of our previous student members and mental health advocacy, really from one of our other student members of the board. While I couldn't get a lot of traction on it from the mouths of babes, I was able to get a lot more just from that student member. So definitely we need to have student members. You know, I've talked to board student members about this, the whole voting responsibilities and full responsibilities. And I can tell you from the last student member of the board, we talked through a lot. And I think we both agree that there is a limit around what student members should vote for and the pressure that comes from sometimes their colleagues and the educators whose classrooms they sit in. And so having a true delineation of separating the opportunity to vote on personnel and finances allows the students to really then focus on, on the true policy changes or advocacy work, which many of them are promoting that they do while they're in that role. I think their voice is valued and is important to changing PG CPS because those are our constituents. They are who we serve. So that's important to hear. But I think there has to be a limit. I think there's very tough decisions that have to be made and sometimes not popular decisions. And unfortunately, I've watched and read where students have had an opportunity to weigh in on a very controversial topic and then adults come after that student. And I would never want to put our student members in that predicament. Never. In terms of pay, we actually, the council provides a scholarship to students. And I think that should continue. I think what we do need to be open-minded about around that scholarship fee is that not all students, and that could be even in the future of our student members of the board, will pursue a post-secondary opportunity. Some of them may go into the world of work because they have acquired a technical skill through our career and technical education program. So I think a delineation of what that looks like needs to be defined. Right now, typically our student members go to a university and that scholarship goes there, directly to that university, not in that student's hand. But to come up with some provisions in the event that they are deciding to go into a career technical education field and not into a university will be helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Fortunately, Zoom allows me to see the order of the hands, so I don't have to take a guess. Mr. Wallace again, and then Ms. Smith again.
Oh, sorry. I just failed to take mine down. I'm sorry.
Okay. That defaults to you, Ms. Smith.
That's awesome. Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Okay, I have another question, Dr. Golson. Actually, if I, if I have two, if I have an opportunity to have two, but the first one you mentioned, I'm looking at trying to synthesize everything in terms of successful elements for relationships, relationship between superintendent and, and the board. And I jot these downs as you were talking. You mentioned trust. You mentioned priority, prioritization of student achievement, clear responsibilities. I think I'm going to throw in communication as number four. Do you have any other ones that are very important to you? I'm looking for successful elements of relationship that has worked, that works for you, that works for your colleagues, that.
Yep. Continuous professional development is the one that is missing.
Got it. And that was a given. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. But that's also with the CEO and our superintendent and those board members.
Okay, wonderful.
Listen.
Great. Thank you. And then the second question, that was easy. The second one was, I want to move to terms, in terms of terms on Board of Education members. What are your thoughts about that? We have heard quite a few scenarios in terms of no term limits for term, for year elect, a combination of appointed years. Just wanted to get your idea and perspective on terms. Thank you.
So I've actually, once again, having been here for a while, had the opportunity to witness a variety of different board structures. Full elected, all appointed and hybrid. But I will say, in terms of term limits, I think there's value in term limits. Because what it does is allow fresh ideas to join a team and to really allow an opportunity to get a different perspective. How long that, what that looks like, honestly, I haven't done much research on it. So, you know, I wouldn't be able to speak around how long that should be. I do know in the current structure, we typically see a shift in our board members every two years, while they might be on longer terms. I see them every two years with shifts on it. But at the end of the day, I think, you know, what that looks like, I think unlimited could be a problem. Because you just don't have an opportunity for fresh perspectives there. But on the other end, then you have someone who truly understands their role and responsibilities and what the school system has evolved into. But from my experience, in all of those structures, there has been a time limit on each seat.
Thank you so much. That's very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and thank you again, Dr. Golson. Colleagues, any additional questions right now? I'm running out of mine, so I need you guys to jump in. Dr. Golson, while there's some empty space, not dead space, if there's some empty space, I'd like to see if you can follow up a little bit around accountability. From what you've seen across the, the region, if not the country, and what might work in Prince George's County, if, if a board member maybe is perceived to cross the line in their role and responsibilities, what types of accountability structures would you recommend to be in place?
So is it in relation to, let me ask you a question before I respond. Is it related, is it in relation to they've crossed the line with the roles and responsibilities as it relates to the CEO or in their role as a board member?
Thanks for the question. How about both? Well, let's start with the latter.
Yeah. So if they, if they, I'll start with the first one, which is the relationship with the CEO and the board, the Board of Education. So typically, if that happens, then that communication is required to take place between the superintendent and the chair with very explicit examples of where that took place. And then the chair then contacts either the board member directly or the entire board to talk about what those actions were and how to make sure that that's avoided. In terms of the entire board, that's essentially why there's the creation of an ethics panel. So that that ethics panel can review what those actions are and then to make a determination of what that consequence should be. It's separate from what the CEO and the relationship is between the CEO and board and then what the responsibilities are of that board. I think we've seen clearly from our own situation that, you know, there to allow, once a recommendation or a comment has been placed to the ethics panel and then to take it back to the same entity of which that complaint has been made and allowed in the vote, can become controversial. So I think there does need to be something delineated on how that should work.
Thank you. And not to make questions harder for the sake of making them harder, but what if that person who crossed the line was the board chair?
Excellent. Then that also still goes to that panel. So that panel should be nonpartisan, should not have any allegiance to any board members. And it's, and that chair is subject to the same consequence that anyone else would be.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? And I'm not going to keep asking questions, Dr. Golson, until our time runs out. I'm not looking for that. But I am, I do want to give my colleagues an opportunity. Mr. Wallace, hello.
The ethics panel that you mentioned, who owns it? Is it reported by the, the, the council, the board?
What's on paper now, who owns it? Would be the school board. So the selection of those members came from the chair, previous chair. And I think the board voted those people in, voted or looked at, I'm not sure how those members got on that panel. But the exist, the previous board chair went through a process of applications and then selecting people to be on the ethics panel.
But they're selected by the board?
That, yes, correct.
That doesn't seem like a conflict of interest.
Is that a question or a statement?
Yes, it's a, I think it's both. To have an ethics panel to investigate them sounds like a conflict of interest.
It could be. I think it's, it's a rhetorical, yeah.
We're going to, we're going to let Dr. Golson off the hook on that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Mr. Wallace, do you have an additional question?
No, 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 I just moved.
Thank you. I'm Miss Laverne.
Again, my question goes back to communication. Because doing the stuff, the kind of work that I do in Bowie, one of the hardest things we have is getting what we want out to the community. Of course, we don't have a newspaper, so that took away some. But I think about the enormity of the numbers of schools, the amount of information, the, the old telephone game, you know, where you say something and when it comes out the other end, it is a whole other story. And of course, we have the next doors and Facebooks and all that stuff, which really can mix it all up. Is there a particular channel that either exists that I have no idea about? Or is it something that you would perceive? And before you answer this, this is my thinking, because I like communication. And when I work with the Bowie schools, I send an email to the principals about green things and they'll often put them in their newsletters. Is this something that happens from whether your office or a particular themed office where schools can directly communicate with parents and especially with language barriers? That's a huge obstacle. How many languages are we now? I remember once somebody said like 78 and with the dialects and everything. So I just wonder how that communication issue is addressed. Thank you.
Great question. So there really is no one way. Because what our communications team has shared with us, different age groups prefer different modalities for communicating. So for example, we have a weekly newsletter for community members, not, and not just community members, but also for staff. They go out on different days. We have Twitter. We have Facebook. So some people, that's all they live by, or Twitter and Facebook. We do, I respond to my own emails in the CEO account and promise people I'll respond within 48 hours. And honestly, I do that to try to make sure that the facts get out so that the next door and the telephone and the CAN thing slows down that come right to the source. So I can give you the response. It's also why I give information to elected officials so that they can make sure they're sharing the correct information. Also, we do telephone town halls on a regular basis and that seems to work. And then we also do what we call robo calls, which are calls home to parents that say, hey, make sure you read the newsletter or check our website. And then lastly, the website, because that one is also access that you have, that you can get 24/7. So we try to put a lot of information. Now, I think there are many cases where it can be information overload. So we put a lot of information on our website and then folks are like, I can see it. It's been there. Let me give you the link. But we also do it for transparency, because I want to make sure people know we're not hiding anything. Information is there, you know, it's just not always easiest to use. And I will tell you, I personally go right to the search bar myself to type in a word, find a link and then email it back to the person. So it's not really one way. We learned during the pandemic, our public television station that we have was really helpful. Um, we learned during the pandemic, our public television station that we have was really helpful for delivery of lessons, um, but not for dissemination of information. Um, because now many of our families are streaming. They really just don't always go directly to, to the TV or cable. Yeah, thanks for that question, but it's so many ways. And there'll be some, and guess what, by two weeks from now, it'll be something else new, and we'll all have to learn.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Thanks again, Dr. Golson. Uh, Ms. Smith, do you have another question?
Yes, hopefully my last one, uh, Dr. Golson. Um, the other C-word, not communication, but compensation. Any thoughts? Any thoughts around, it's kind of a weird question, because you know, but, but I want to hear your thoughts uh, in general, in your thirty-one years of experience. And now, what do you think about compensation? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think um our board members, one, I think if you're looking, you, I think you got to decide what it is that, the type of person that you are looking for to serve as members of the Boards of Education. So those who already have existing jobs who come in don't necessarily need it to, I mean, they need to be paid and compensated for their time. Let me be clear on that piece. But that amount is not as instrumental as one who, this is their sole responsibility and job. Now, when you look at other neighboring jurisdictions, our um people are getting paid less than most. Um, and so, but then there are other boards across other states where they are volunteer. So if, you know, it, I do believe that there should be some compensation for their time. But I think it still comes back to a question that you all have to answer around the type of person that you're looking for to serve on them, on the Board of Education. Um, and is it someone who already existing, has an existing job? And then are really working to supplement, very similar to what typical billion-dollar organizations have, which are boards where people serve um in addition to their regular work? Or um, is it one where you're looking to make this their sole job? But it's been this amount, the, the amount that they're getting paid, it's been that amount for a while.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you, Dr. Golson. Uh, colleagues, any more questions? Uh, Dr. Golson, I'm, I'm actually going to yield any more of my questions as well. Um, but I want to give my colleagues uh some more wait time. I think eight seconds is a good, is a good wait time. Hi, Ms. Rivera. You're on mute, Ms. Rivera?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just hit the buttons, finding where the button is. Um, oh, Lord, now I forgot my question. No, no, I got it, I got it. What I'd like to know, Dr. Golson, is there something we have not asked you that you would like to share with us that might fill in something or a topic we just have not even discovered or seen or covered?
Not that I can think of. I appreciate that question, but I think um the ability for everyone to ask questions allows the opportunity to get that any areas I didn't hit. Um, so no, I can't think of them.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. That's, that's probably uh the best ending question. If nothing else, thank you. Uh, before we, we move to potential closure, any other questions?
So, so Dr. Coleman, this is Erica. I just actually wanted to, and if Dr. Golson um doesn't mind, one of the questions, early questions that Dr. Christie had asked about was about kind of the, the, the pull, I guess, or the, the concerns or issues that may have arise from the county, this CEO being appointed by the county executive and in the board, even though the CEO is the sole employee of the board. One of the things that people may not be aware is that the board does negotiate the CEO's contract and, and it has to vote. So that is one thing I think people may not be aware of as well. Um, so even though the county executive may actually select the, the CEO, the board members, the board was actually the chair acting a proxy for the board, negotiates that contract with the CEO, with their representative in the board, then votes on that contract. So there is some level um of, of choice in there. Go ahead, Dr. Golson, I see.
They also evaluate, and, and the Board of Education also evaluates me. So thank you for bringing that up. And, and now that you said that, can I add one more thing too? Sorry. Sorry, you just, you know, when you get old, one word can trigger it. Um, and what I will say is that um I appreciate the ability to be able to cross over and get the support from the county government. So it allows me the opportunity to sit in on cabinet-level meetings at the county government level along with, which allow, which gives me a better lens on how I can do a better job in the school system. So the ability, for example, um, to talk to a Dr. Carter every day and then um to then conversing, quickly reach out to a Dr. Askew is only built from those relationships that were established because I'm considered to be part of the county government's team as well. And so it does allow the opportunity for um a different kind of collaboration that you don't always have, um, when it's solely looked at and working in silos of Board of Education and then county government. And I think the pandemic, while I'm, I'm, you know, I'm probably praying more than anyone that this thing ends very, very soon. But had this not structured, had this structure not been in place during this pandemic, it would have been very difficult to navigate. It would have been just extreme. It was already difficult. But to be able to have those resources at hand, to be able to pick up a phone and say, hey, we got, I got to get teachers vaccinated, when Kaiser said, hey, this is the limit we have, and then the contact the health department, make a supplement, and to understand the sense of urgency around getting it done was key.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Dr. Golson, as we started, I mean, wow, I really appreciate you coming here tonight and asking and answering rapid presenting, uh, presentation, I don't want to say rapid fire, but rapid uh presentation questions on a multiple uh level in, 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 in topic area um, in your position and, you know, through your thirty-one years of experience, serving currently as CEO, and also having your ear on the ground um with your colleagues across the region and the country. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, with that, and I thank you as a task force, I want to turn it back over to Mr. Urson and Ms. Wilson.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Thank you, Dr. Golson. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight uh, and to participate uh in the, the work that the task force is doing. I think this was a, a very good conversation, uh, and we appreciate all the information you shared tonight. Uh, certainly hope that uh the members of the public who were watching tonight have uh enjoyed and appreciated the conversation. Um, I don't think, I think we covered all the logistical pieces uh at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, so I don't think we need to go over any of that. Um, uh, as we go forward, uh, we will, as I said, we will be sharing the information uh regarding the extension of the task force's time uh and the second public listening session as soon as we finalize that. Uh, and to those watching us tonight, we'll be sending that out uh with information on how you can sign up to participate. Uh, and for the members of the task force, we will be uh sending that invitation to you as well, so you can push that out to your networks. Uh, so we look forward to having a, a, a good, you know, hopefully robust conversation uh that evening when we do that. Uh, but as I said earlier, that will take place uh later in January, uh, once we come back for full task force meetings. Uh, so with that, uh, Erica or Ron or Patrick, unless there's anything else that we need to cover uh tonight. Erica, just ended, I'm.
No, I was going to just tell you, you, you covered everything, John.
Okay, thank you. So with that, uh, thank, I want to thank everybody for being with us tonight. I want to wish you all a happy holiday, and, and to those watching from the public, a happy holiday as well. Uh, we look forward to continuing our work uh as we come back from the holiday season. And um, uh, we'll be in touch with additional information. So thank you, everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. Good night.
Happy holidays, everybody.